We'd like to welcome everyone to our Bountiful City Council Work Session Meeting tonight, Tuesday, September 23rd, 2025. And we will begin tonight with our Bountiful Fiber Update. So we've asked our city manager, Gary Hill, to lead out on this topic.
Thanks, Mayor. I think the council knows that we completed substantial completion, that term of art in the project, back in June, April, May, June, and have, we have all of our footprints active and operating. And tomorrow, night after tomorrow night, at 4:30, we're going to do a ribbon-cutting/light-the-bountiful event to celebrate our kicking off the fiber utility. And so, this is in conjunction with the farmer's market. So we're looking forward to that. And this is a good time to kind of give an update on the project and share with you all and the public how we are meeting our benchmarks and answer any questions. In your packet, on page three, we have some information that was put together by Galen. And I just wanted to point out a few things tonight and then see what questions you have. As far as some interesting statistics, 10 footprints total in Bountiful with a total of 1.3 million feet of fiber installed. Considering the amount of work, all underground, all through directional boring and hand-digging, and it's kind of amazing, as I drove through town, and remember some of the holes that I saw being dug in park strips, to go by now and see how little visible impact there is from the installation. I don't know that we can say enough good about B. Jackson and the work that they did. In fact, Beth, I might put you on the spot. Your neighborhood was one initially who had some concerns about the installation because I think it was being done in the winter. It was one of the first ones that was being installed. What has the result been since then?
It's been fantastic. It started in January during the stormiest week that we had the whole winter, on a steep hill. And it didn't go so well right at the beginning. After the snow melted, we could see that some sprinkler lines had been cut. And they were working in terrible conditions, and we could see it once the snow melted. And so, the neighborhood called and got immediate response. People came over, fixed sprinkler lines, fixed the landscaping, and then checked back in. I believe it was, who walked our street? I think a couple of people walked our street.
I think Lloyd walked our street, and also with our project superintendent, sorry, I can't believe, I can't remember his name, Clayton.
Clayton, yes.
We referred a lot of people to Clayton over the last couple of years.
Yes. And so, walked up and down our street and checked with the neighbors and made sure everyone was happy. It was a great experience.
Yeah, we're really pleased with it. And so, this, we're beginning what is really the first full year of operations. In your packet, there's a table that shows what our projections were for the first two years of construction, 2024 and 2025. We really didn't expect any kind of a take rate the first year, maybe 1%. And that was based on our existing commercial customers that Utopia already had that we brought onto our system. Ended up with a 0.08% take rate. And then in 2025, our projected take rate was 5%. We ended the fiscal year with 6.2%. And this year, we are projecting a total of 12% take rate. But as of, well, really just two months in, taking the count from July and August, we're already at 9.1%. We're averaging about 230 new customers per month currently, and expect to see that continue. Our projection for next year, 2027, will be 30%, 2028, 35%, 2029, 37%, and then 2030 is 40%. The break-even take rate is right around that 35% number. So we're pleased, optimistic. Things are going well. We hear good reports from our residents and customers, as well as from the providers. So we are, currently have, the next stage of really what we're looking to do is to begin making sure that we finish some of these footprints where, that are on private property, HOAs primarily. We have a number of HOAs in town that have private roads and in which we don't necessarily have easements. So it's, we're going to begin systematically contacting them, finding out if they'll sign an agreement with us to let us put fiber in their road. There's no cost to any of the HOAs to do this. We've already paid Utopia for this service. And so, and it doesn't obligate anybody to sign up. It's just a matter of having it available to the homes in those particular subdivisions. With that, happy to answer any questions that you might have.
We have an event this week kind of commemorating the kickoff of being, our city being built out, so we'll look forward to that. Are all the council members planning to attend that? Great.
Mayor?
Sure.
If I may. I guess I just want to make a comment that I really, this is super exciting. And we really seem to be moving in the right trajectory. And mostly, I just want to say a little shout-out to all of the residents who were super involved and hyper-involved in kind of getting this project to fruition. There were a lot of people who advocated for this for many, many years, way too many people to name. And I know that a lot of people in this room were, I think all of us were hoping for and wanting to get fiber in the city, a citywide plan. And all of the discussions and many things that happened over the years brought us to this point. But I guess mostly, I just want to publicly thank all of the individuals and residents who wrote emails, who reached out, made phone calls, requested this over and over, just pushed this in the city. And so, I think it's a really great example of citizen advocacy and gone just right in the best kind of ways. So thanks to everybody who did that over the years.
It's an important point because it really was the residents that started the whole thing. So that's a great point. Anybody else? Questions or comments?
Just, I'm just trying to find it. Our projections is based off, what was the total, what's the total number?
Total number of potential customers is 18,742. That's right above the table on page three, kind of hiding.
Oh, there it is. Okay. And then, in our current budget, I know Utopia's, I just see stuff coming out online on social media of the promoting Bountiful Fiber through the Utopia. And then we have our individual ISPs. Is there any other marketing that we're planning to do as a city to really ramp up to that 30 and 35 number?
Yeah, we'll continue to work with Utopia to push out information. I think they are trying to be a little strategic about it so it doesn't become background white noise. So, right now, it's the light-up event. And by the way, if the council wouldn't mind sticking around after for just a minute, the mayor and I have a request about maybe some things you might be prepared for, for the light-up event. It's not like costumes or anything like that, although we could do that. We still have the parade costumes in the back room, so. But if you wouldn't mind.
I would really love our parade costume, so I think we should.
But the next phase then, as I mentioned, councilman, is to market to the HOAs. And then you'll see some regular posts to kind of keep it in front of people.
Anything else?
Mayor, if I could, oftentimes, as council members, we celebrate the things that previous councils have done. And I just want to congratulate everybody. First of all, the residents who pushed for this. And second of all, the council members who did their due diligence and really agonized over this decision. I think that we came to the right decision. I know that in time, I'm confident that in time, this decision to bring fiber in, no one's going to remember the names of any of us that voted in favor of it. But they're going to benefit from the amenities they have access to in their homes and the network speed that they have access to in their homes. And I think that'll be a big deal going forward. So congratulations to those who put in the time and, I think, came to the right conclusion. This will be exciting as we go forward as councilmember Price Hewish said.
Thank you. Okay. Well, thanks for that discussion. We just wanted to make sure that that was clear and that everyone understood where we're at in this process. And now, we will move on with the discussion of the statutory regulations for the city's event application process. So we'll turn the time over to our attorney, Brad Jupson.
All right. So you had one in your packet, and then I put one in front of you that had some suggestions from Councilmember Bradshaw. Unfortunately, I had some printer troubles late. So rather than being read, the suggestions are under the Notice section, which is 105. And they are just in very light-colored font rather than being in red. But today, I did bring some extras. Anybody here would like a copy of it as we talk about it?
Do you guys want a copy, just for your homework?
All right. So after our last work session, we reorganized this a bit. There's not a lot of substantial changes. But starting with the definitions, we now have two specific and distinct definitions, one for event and one for multi-day event. Event, the process will be listed under 603. And for multi-day events, it's under, sorry, under 618-104. Those are both defined terms, so you'll see them capitalized as we go through there. Nothing changed on what we defined them as. Nothing changed as to what we defined as the event area. Under the permit required, what did change was number F. And keep in mind, this is for an event, not a multi-day event. We'll get to multi-day events in a minute. We had some question about, well, what happens if we get two applications for the same place over the same period of time? So we, as a group, decided we would say we're not going to have more than one single event. The question I have for you guys, I put a 30-day period in there as a placeholder. What would we like that number to be? So this would be not a multi-day event. We'll get to that in a minute. This is just your regular block party. Do we want to do one every day? Do we want to have seven days between? Do we want to have discretion? What's the council's thought on how long we should be able to do one block party to another, one single event day to another single event day?
I don't think we should specify. I think we shouldn't.
So the mayor would prefer we just get rid of that within a 30-day period altogether?
This was F, right?
This is F in 102.
I would agree with that. It seemed highly restrictive.
I guess I want to maybe think about it and talk through it for just a minute. So I have a neighbor that is, comes, has a very musical family. And they sometimes like to do backyard concerts. And they do, they do a handful of them during the summer. Usually, they invite the neighborhood, so I'm there and not impacted. But every once in a while, they're doing it as kind of a private event, and it does create a lot of parking and a lot of noise. It's a very melodious and harmonious noise, but it does greatly exceed their property boundaries. So if they were to have a summer concert every weekend in their backyard, that would be a little bit impactful, even though it's a one-day event and it may only last a handful of hours.
If that happened, then if they applied for every event that they wanted to do?
They could apply every Saturday.
Then if that happened, then I think that the staff could evaluate and think, is this getting to be too much for the neighborhood? I don't know.
It does seem, I have a question. Like, in this scenario, Councilmember Bradshaw, are they, under the definition of the event, are these other things happening?
They're a single-day event. They're a one-day, they're actually just probably a handful-of-hour event. But if they were consistent every Saturday of the summer, in their backyard concerts?
So, oh, go ahead. Keep in mind, this wouldn't apply unless they exclude members of the public from porch public property, obstructs public roads, parking lots, or sidewalks, requires temporary closure restriction of right-ofways, or occupies more than 50% of available spaces within a city-owned parking lot or facility. So if they're closing a road for like a block party, this would apply. If they're just having concerts in their backyard, probably this particular definition of event wouldn't apply.
They're definitely exceeding the noise ordinance.
It would definitely apply under the noise ordinance.
Typically amplified music has to have a permit.
A noise permit, which we have referenced in here, but we have not dove into the Bountiful City's noise ordinance.
I would, may I respond to Councilmember Bradshaw's comment? I, just a reminder that I know that it's sometimes annoying to have streets, all of the street parking taken up in your neighborhood. But the street parking is there to be used as street parking. And I would support your request for a more restrictive policy if you'll help me get my streets stopped being closed by the Jeep Posse during handcart days. So we can team up on this.
I have another council member that can maybe help you with that request.
No, there's no controlling the Jeep Posse. No committee can control them.
So I hate to work backwards here, but this is one that was brought up and I kind of glossed over it. If we go back to the first page of event, we have four things that create an event. One thing we talked about, and I believe we decided not to do, but we could certainly reopen it for discussion, is I put occupies more than 50% of the available spaces within any city-owned parking lot or facility. We had briefly discussed saying, "or on-street parking in the event area." With Councilmember Higginson bringing this up, as a, now, keep in mind, this would start getting in the way into, if we did this, we'd start looking at weddings. It would start looking at family reunions. It would start looking at church or some sort of baptism-type events, which I believe last time is why we kind of shook our head no. But as of right now, this would not apply to an event that doesn't take up a city-owned parking lot, just takes up all the on-street parking in an area. Is that still the direction from the council?
Yeah. I feel like on-street parking is meant to be the public, the public's parking. And occasionally, that means you have a family party or whatever it is. But that's, I think that's the point of public parking. So I'd rather not be restrictive with that.
Mayor, if I may?
Counsel, yeah.
I would agree with that. I would not want to open this up to restricting on-street parking, as long as the other things are not being met, meaning it's not limiting the public to public property, you know, 1, 2, and 3 under that subsection be of what is an event. However, I did have a concern about number 4, which is occupying more than 50% of the available spaces within any city-owned parking lot or facility. And I just kind of did a quick mental tour through the city, and I thought 50% is a pretty high number, a pretty high threshold. And that I think if you're allowing, if we allow 50% of available spaces to be occupied for an event, then as our threshold, I think that really has the potential to impact other users significantly of a facility. And I'm going from large venues such as North Cannon Park or Washington Park or, you know, this parking lot, to smaller venues like EGA. And I think, I personally would like to see that number be a little lower. I don't want to restrict any on-street parking, but something lower here, I think, is more appropriate, such as 25%. That still, even in our small parks, is restricting quite a few spaces from public use, from other user groups.
So if we restricted it further, then you're saying that for something that's like a one-time event, you wouldn't want them to be able to monopolize a public parking lot with more than like 25%?
Right.
Is that, okay. Counsel, any thoughts on that?
Gary? Oh, I do have a thought. I think we have to consider enforcement as we look at this.
Yeah, sure.
If someone's having a wedding in the park and they have 50% of the spots, do we then want to send over a police officer to ticket additional cars? And how do we know which cars? I just, I feel like as it's written even, it may be difficult to enforce.
That's a good, that's a good point, for sure. Yeah. Gary?
That's, Councilmember, sorry, I call everybody by their first name, and I'm trying to get better at it. Councilmember Beth just made the point that I was going to say, in practicality, I think we settled on 50% because it's relatively easy to determine without having to get into the specifics of counting spaces and then counting cars. And for a single-day event, this doesn't, this typically is not a problem. We have the occasional ones. But the example that you gave is a perfect example of the kind of thing we don't want to get in the middle of, of enforcing parking at a wedding or family reunion. We prefer not to.
What about?
Can I add to that, after Councilmember Bradshaw?
What about the instance where the event is going to like block off parking because they've got a refrigerated truck or some other type of equipment?
Or a start-finish line, or...
Yeah. How would you propose to handle that, where that could, you know, impact half of a parking lot or more?
My answer would be they would have to get a permit. If we, if they take up more than half the spots, whether it be with one car, 10 cars, or 50 cars, depending on how big the law is, then they would qualify as an event and they'd have to apply for a permit. I'm sensitive to Councilmember Price Hewish's point of view here because it is, 50% is a lot. But I also don't want to catch up, you know, the mountain bike club in this, where if we go to 20% and we have 10 people drive to one of our smaller trailheads, we're going to be pushing that. Or even a group of mothers that go to, sorry, the park across from the high school can't.
Creekside.
Creekside Park. Not a lot of parking spots there. Easily 10 cars would add up to that 20%. I don't, so I don't want to catch up too many people that we haven't already been requiring get permits. And I thought, I believe that 50% threshold is kind of where it's annoying, but there's still enough parking spots for everybody else. But this is totally for you guys, and if we want to move that up or down, we can do that.
So I do have one comment.
Let's hear it.
Or a concern, and that is, you know, we're always advocating for folks to get out and exercise and run and walk. And the 50% threshold would even be silly low for the folks that put on the races at the rec center, even for some of our bigger family reunion events that are held at the pavilion over there. I just, I personally, I don't think that there needs to be a restriction on what percentage of the spaces they use. If folks want to use that park that's already full of people doing their own personal event, they can find parking and still make use of it. So I'd be in favor of removing the 50% or any other, putting any other restriction on use of parking. If they've got a permit, they should be able to use the parking.
Keep in mind, Councilmember Higginson, if, this is what triggers the event. If they plan on, or sorry, the permit. If they don't plan on taking, if they don't plan on doing 1, 2, or 3, or taking up more than 50% of a parking lot, they don't even need to apply for a permit.
Right.
So if they do plan on it, they can still do it. We can still have the group, we can still have the family reunion. They'll just have to apply for a permit first.
Indeed. But if the permit says that they can only use 50% of the parking, then we won't have any more races at the Bountiful Rec Center or South Davis Rec Center.
And that's not a restriction on the permit. They could ask for more.
They could use the entire, we could permit the use of the entire parking lot. It's just that if they're going to use 50%, it's that, at that point, they have to get a permit.
Thank you.
Okay. Is counsel comfortable, the majority of counsel, comfortable with these, with 1, 2, 3, 4?
I just had a quick clarification. On number 2, obstructs public roads, are we saying that officially blocks? Or in some of our streets, I'm thinking of a 24th of July event on Millbrook, where it's double-row cars, almost the entire street, which makes it now a narrow one-lane road. Would that qualify as obstruct, and maybe that individual needs to have a permit?
So obstructs, I mean, the obstructs is pretty simple. I mean, an event permit is generally a, you can break certain regulations of the city. And one of the regulations we have in our city is you don't obstruct, you don't obstruct the vehicular pedestrian right-ofways. So this would allow you to obstruct them. I can't exactly say how. This is part of our disorderly conduct code. It's part of our city code. I've seen places, you know, where somebody put a Conex box out in the street and we call it obstructs. But, you know, just causing a traffic jam by already parking on the side of the road, if they're legally parked, probably wouldn't be obstructs.
Yeah, it would probably be anything in excess of what's currently allowed by our parking ordinance.
Makes sense. Thank you. So counsel, just to keep it moving, what are councilmembers okay with B. 1, 2, 3, 4, generally speaking?
So can I just make one more comment?
Yeah, sure.
So just to clarify and reiterate what our city attorney has said is that number 4, the percentage would just trigger the need for a permit. And so, not necessarily triggering a need for enforcement or triggering a need for, and regardless, any ordinance that we pass, I think, triggers some enforcement component. So I'll just state my opinion. I'm completely comfortable with 1, 2, and 3. I think that if somebody is planning an event that's going to take 25% of our available spaces, I think that should be, I would like to see that be an event. But that's, so I would make a suggestion, once again, that it be 25% a lower amount.
And I want to apologize that I misread number 4 when I read this packet online. And now I have no further comment.
Okay. So is there anyone else who would like to have, who has any objection with 1, 2, 3, or 4?
I would agree with Councilwoman Price-Hewish on a lower percentage for four. I think if, if a permit is triggered by meeting all four of those things, I'm not really worried about the moms meeting at Creekside Park triggering this if they have to meet...
This is an or, so it's one of the four.
One of the four.
One, any one of those four would trigger the need for a permit.
So a wedding, that's a good example. I mean, that's kind of a common thing that people might do.
If it was a city-owned park or law or facility?
Like a pavilion, family reunion, picnic, whatever.
And just so we're on the same page, let's assume that there's an argument that we have the group of moms that show up to the park, they're taking more than, in the case of, of the suggestion, 25% of the parking. And there's another group that shows up, and they're unhappy with it. Well, they contact the city, and then we have to get a hold of the moms and do what at that point? Kick them out because they don't have a permit? We don't get the choice, once the ordinance is passed, whether or not we can enforce. We can't say, we will enforce against, you know, a ban, but we won't enforce against a mountain bike team. So I think that's why we're asking for a little leniency on this. And then, if there's a problem, we can always amend the ordinance and make it more restrictive. But we, we don't anticipate there being a lot of problems with it.
No, and, and we're talking about people that are having, like foresight, they're planning well ahead of them using the facility, and so they should know a little bit more of what they're going to, who they're inviting. But the example of the moms, I don't know very many moms that are thinking that far in advance of getting the pavilion and knowing that they're going to be using 25% of the parking stalls, because my, my family, when we show up, whether I like it or not, I have five cars, because no one wants to ride with mom and dad. So, there's, there's those situations too, where it, they could, you could have a family just taking up a lot more stalls, just because no one wanted to ride with each other. But I like the, I like it, I think it's an event, these are people that are thinking out, because we have other sections that we'll be talking about, that says if this triggers, this is going to be required to be a single-day event or a multi-day event.
Okay. Maybe we can just get a little clarity on the others?
I'm, I'm comfortable with it as it is written, one, two, three, and four.
Okay. And you are comfortable, Councilman Murray, and Councilman Higginson is comfortable with how it's written?
I'm comfortable.
Okay. All right. So should we move to the next section?
So going back to F, we got rid of the, within a 30-day period. Keep in mind, we are going to have more of a restriction for multi-day events. This will essentially mean that if your neighbor applies for a permit on Wednesday, you can still apply for one on Thursday, which is great. So now, moving on to some of the other changes we had, we have section three. We were, we originally started, this is an event application that we received with fewer than 10 days before the event. It's not a multi-day event, this is just an event application. And we raised the fee from $50 in my initial draft to $150 in this draft. Any questions?
So, sorry, this is for a one, one-day event?
This is for a single-day event, yep.
Okay.
It's free unless you apply less than 10 days prior to the event, and then there'll be a $150 fee.
If you're, if you're less than 10 days.
Yep.
Thank you.
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
Okay. So, we are always very aware of and sensitive to the use of staff time for things such as reviewing applications, or everything. So, I'm curious as to what this might typically look like? And are we anticipating a, some kind of fillable form? I see that the application will be, you know, is to be delivered to the city recorder. But I'm curious about having no fee attached to the event unless, if it's submitted further 10 days or beyond, because of the staff time. And so, maybe you could, we could get a little light shone on what type of staff time this, and how many departments, and what this will look like.
Yeah, that's a great question. And let me maybe run through the process, and I'm going to ask Lloyd and, and the chief, if I mess this up, what your experience is. With one-day events in particular, it's, it's very simple. There's an application that's filled out, and that we already have available. It's collected by Sophia, the city recorder. Then she sends it out to the applicable departments that might have some say, and it's usually parks, and engineering, police, and legal. Brad, I think, do you sometimes get a copy of it?
Yes. Basically, send it to all, all department heads. We all have our own little thing we look at.
Power department, too. Everybody takes a look at it with, with most of these applications, we're talking about like a neighborhood block party. It's five minutes of review, depending upon, you know, what they're, what they want, what they're going to do. The vast majority of them are very, very simple. There are a few that are a little more complicated, but not typically for the one-day events. That might involve a sound permit, and in that case, the police will give a little bit more review. But I think the idea here is that we don't want, at least traditionally, we haven't wanted to charge neighborhoods for just trying to comply with our ordinance and make that prohibitive.
So do you think $150 is reflective of what it costs?
I think it's reflective, I don't, I don't know if it's reflective of what it costs. I mean, I had originally put $50. In my mind, this is more of a, of a carrot and a stick thing. We want to encourage people to apply and give us the proper time to review it. And we, I had originally said $50 when we were here last, that had been asked to move up to $150. So, I mean, there is staff time that goes into it, but really, we're trying to encourage people to apply, to give us plenty of time to look into the application, respond thoroughly.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're trying to hit them with the carrot, so to speak.
This, I love that visual. It's a little Bugs Bunny. So, I, I can appreciate what you've said, especially like when we're kind of thinking about a lot of, a lot of ways that this is currently being used, neighborhood block parties, et cetera. When we move to the multi-day events, I could be wrong, but I didn't see a fee associated with that. That's maybe a different animal, a multi-day event. Is there, I, I didn't see it. I did see there was a late fee, a $500 late fee. These are more intensive, these have more moving parts, maybe higher-level review, more staff time. I did not see where there was a fee associated just with the standard application submission.
So, so there's not, and if, if we can move over to that section, I think we're, if we're, get a thumbs up with the 150, then we'll move over to that section.
Before we leave, can I clarify one thing?
Yes.
So if I apply at Councilmember Bradshaw's home, more than 30 days ahead of time with a preemptive permit, I will not be charged a fee.
You will not be charged.
Thank you. I mean, what weekends you need?
Bring your tuba.
So, so moving on to the, moving on to the multi-day event permits. Last time, I had originally had the 10 days prior, based on direction of council, we moved that to no less than 30 calendar days. Now, keep in mind, council, once again, this is not necessarily reflective of the time we put in. This is, give us plenty of time so that we can, we can properly analyze it, and don't make us rush it. The, so we started, we moved it from 10 days to 30 days, and if you apply inside of 30, there will be a $500 fee associated with that application.
I thought within 15 days.
Sorry, that, that should be 30 days. That, that was my mistake, that was direction I got last time, was to move that to 30 days. There will be no fee, as long as it's 30. If it's within 30 days, and this is calendar days, not, not business days, we've kind of changed it to give us, you know, basically, a calendar month, then although it'll be a $500 fee. And so we added section four. That was added because we, if, we, since we added this notice provision in 105, if we don't get the application prior to three days, we're not even going to process it, because there's no way you could provide notice in time, even if, even if we were able to process it. So that's where the 500 came from, Councilmember Price-Hewish. I believe I had it at 150, and the council's direction was, that was not enough, and to raise it to 500. Is that still where our direction is?
I don't, I mean, it just seems a little arbitrary to me, it seems a little high, but I don't know. I'm, I mean, what do you think, counsel?
I don't think it seems high. If they, that's currently constructed, if they apply in greater than 30 days for a multi-day event, that's going to include multiple city departments needing to review it, in a, in an orderly course of fashion, then they can avoid this fee. If they submit it with 15 days to go for a multi-day event, that likely involves a lot of departments having our city staff drop what they're doing, and move their thing to the front of the line, there's a fee to drop stuff and move it to the front of the line for a very involved event. And I'm comfortable that we need to make sure it's taken seriously. There's, there's notice provisions that follow later on, and in 105, and you have to back into those notice provision timelines. And so when you hit 15 days, before someone's going to have all the things show up for their event, you're, you're really clicking through a lot of work quickly. And if you're really pulling off a multi-day event, I expect you to be sophisticated enough to, to apply in advance.
Yeah, I can see, I can see that.
And this is just a, this is a flat rate, there isn't any other charges that go on after this has been submitted. So it's not like a tiered thing of $100 for the, for the permit, but then if you shut down the road, and we need to employ a police officer for three hours, we're not going to charge you for those. This is just the flat rate.
No, they, they would be charged, they would be charged for, if, if city personnel are necessary for their event, that would be part of the approval process, and that would be something that hypothetically, we got a multi-day event, Chief Beeler looks at it, he says, no, 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 this is a major highway, we're going to need marked cars out there with lights on while this is running. So, one of, one of Chief Beeler's conditions for approval is going to be, you have two marked cars, one on front, one on back, out there, and you're going to have to pay time and a half. So, this is the flat fee for the application, depending on the event and the staff personnel required on the day of the event, sanitation, parks, police, those additional conditions could be applied that would charge the person for the event.
Good question.
Because in that case, to me, that, that fee of 500 is, I don't know how that compares to other cities that have, I mean, it feels like they might have a little lower of a, of a fee, but that's because they also are doing a tiered cost, because it's going to be an accrued cost on, on that, on that, on that host afterwards.
It makes sense, though, that, yeah, we don't know what costs may be, and so that's all part of the evaluation of the event, right, is to indicate if there would be further costs, or...
And keep in mind, there is no cost for the application if submitted within a month.
Yeah, within, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions on that point?
Brad, I had a question for you on B four. So given the notice provisions in your new copy, so if a, if an application is submitted, currently drafted at three business days before the event, it will not be accepted. Do we feel like, so if they submitted it with a $500 fee for being a rush review at three days, are they going to be able to meet these notice provisions? Because the staff's going to need at least a day with it.
They wouldn't, they wouldn't be able to mail them. And, and it depends, it depends, Councilmember Bradshaw, that's, we're not guaranteeing we're going to get all applications. There could be some simple multi-day event applications that we review, we check off and say, yep, you can do that Friday to Saturday, and we could, we could review it and be done within a few hours. There's others that will take us a long time. So I left the three days in there, knowing that it could still get, hypothetically, it could still get processed, and they could post it rather than mail it, which would allow them to have it. Like I said, the city, where the city is not bound to get to, or to process it within that time, but there will be many simple event applications that we will be able to do pretty easily.
Thanks for that. Any other questions on that point? Okay. So is everybody okay so far with the ordinance as drafted, so far?
All right, let's move, and we're, we still have time. Let's get to 105. This is where the changes are. You have a copy in your, in your packet, and then they have this additional copy with Councilmember Bradshaw's recommendations. The first one, like I said, I had some printer problem, it wasn't read. You can see where it says, if organizers choose to mail the notice, it must be postmarked no later than 96 hours prior to the start of the event. This is essentially, this is essentially meaning that we're going to give those people 48 hours notice, at least 48 hours notice, if they choose to do it by mail. That makes sense to me, probably an omission when I wrote it. Does anybody have any issues with adding that suggestion from Councilmember Bradshaw?
I'm happy to explain my reasoning there to my colleagues. Though I love the U.S. Postal Service, you know, neither rain nor sleet nor hail, mail doesn't always get delivered, even if you mail in Boundifful the next day. So if we have a 48-hour notice, and the applicant were to put their notices in the mail, it may take 24 to 48 hours for that notice to arrive in somebody's mailbox, to be made aware that they're going to have these impacts for a multi-day event. And so my conversation with Brad is, if it's, if the applicant has the option of choosing these other notice provisions, but they elect to do the mailing, how do we ensure that they will arrive in mailboxes 48 hours in advance? And the only way to do that is to back up and make sure that they're postmarked in enough time for, for it to work its way through the postal system and, and be in someone's mailbox at the 48-hour mark.
Okay. I mean, do you want to, is there some, do you want to say that, that that's one method, but that they could do other kinds of methods of noticing?
They, they do have three choices of noticing. So this is if they elect mail, then they, they need to make sure it arrives.
Yeah.
48 hours in advance.
Okay.
I think that's reasonable.
Yeah.
I would agree with that. I did have a concern about B, right after that.
So, if we're ready, let me talk about B for a moment, then I'll let Councilmember Bradshaw explain. I'm not so in favor of B, not because I think it's a bad idea, I just don't know how it's going to work practically. We talked about this last time, the idea of posting notices at the parking lots, or the parking lots they're going to use, or the trailhead they're going to use. Unfortunately, all of our parking lots don't have great, already-established places to put conspicuous, conspicuous notice. Not that I think it's a bad idea, I'm just not sure how it'll apply. Brock has been, has been on vacation, so I haven't been able to talk to him about this. So that, that's my main concern about B, is I'm, I'm concerned, I, I'm concerned the application of it will be, will be difficult. On the other side, without putting it in the ordinance, one thing that was suggested last time, was that, not in the ordinance, but that direction from the council and from our city manager, when we do have a multi-day event and a closure, we post it on our, on our public notice sites, those will be, will be closed. Not necessarily something that needs to go in the ordinance, but something we can do if we choose not to go the route of posting it at the scene, is something that staff could do at the direction of council, or at the direction of the city manager, rather than a statutory requirement. Councilmember Bradshaw?
So I think we should do both the newbie, and I think we should utilize our, our public notice opportunities as a city for multi-day events in particular. I, I think this posting in advance is fairly routine. The Mueller Park Half Marathon is coming up, it's an annual event in Mueller Park, it's on Forest Service territory, so it's not ours to manage or deal with, but it's routinely posted at the trailhead in advance, so that people can be aware that it's a, going to be a robust day on the trail with the extra runners coming down. so that people can be aware that it's a, going to be a robust day on the trail with the extra runners coming down. So.
I would agree with that. That was my concern that, well, first of all, I, I agree with the notice and the 400 yards, but there are many public spaces that could be utilized for these events and where people are not living within that 400 yards, but regular utilizers of those spaces. For example, I'm just thinking to myself, I often utilize Rocket Park. I don't live within 400 yards of Rocket Park, I mean Tolman Park. And anyway, and I, I just think that, my main concern, sorry, Mayor, if I can just say this, my main concern is size standardization and of whatever this looks like. So if we do have it, and I would highly recommend that we do, because unless you live with, you're getting one of those 400-yard notice requirements, you're not going to really know what's happening. And I would love to see just it be standardized, and so I support it.
I think the spirit of the law, it's a good, it's a good idea, but in practical terms, I think if people, maybe for some people, you know, we already have sign ordinances prohibiting putting signs in parks, for example. And so if some people have different kinds of makeshift signs or are, you know, taping a poster board around a stop, stop sign or just kind of trying to meet the requirement, but it's not really, there's not really a standard way of doing that.
We, we do actually have a standard way. We can borrow from different notice requirements. The planning department has notice requirements when you have different types of public hearings where neighbor is required to be posted in front of the property that's going through whatever they've applied for, a zoning change or, or any, any other type of, of building permit. And we do have a, a standard sign that the planning department goes and puts in front of the property that lets people know that there's going to be a hearing on that particular issue. And so to me, copying and pasting from that particular notice section would make tremendous sense.
So would you think that you would want staff to be going and posting those signs at events?
Well, it could be staff, but I, I would place the onus to do that on the, the applicant. But that standardization of what that notice looks like can mirror what those planning department notices already look like.
And we, in, as part of the, as part of the approval process, if this is left in, as part of the approval process, that'll just be something staff has to, has to look at, is where the, where we want them posted and how we want it posted. I think, I think probably better than putting a specific method in the statute would be to include that as part of our review and make it, make it event-specific, location-specific, about where they're going to post it and where, I mean, we already have the information that'll be posted, but where it'll be posted and how many places it'll be posted.
What other thoughts do councilmembers have about this?
So Mayor, I'm, oh, go ahead. I'm thinking again of the, maybe the or what question. So who's checking to see that all this happened, and what if they don't? Do we then cancel the event?
So we, we do have answers to that, which would be the last thing we'd be looking at today, but we do have some penalties. And essentially, the violation for that would be a 12-month ban from having another multi-day event if, if you didn't follow through with everything that we required in part of the application. Yeah, we could charge them with a class D misdemeanor. Probably not what we're going to do. We're probably going to give them a ban from hosting future events.
So their event could continue on, but then next, they couldn't do it for the next year?
That, that would be our enforcement provision.
Can I ask a question? What are we looking at primarily currently and historically for multi-day events? I mean, are they organizers or applicants? Are they, I mean, I'm just wondering, are these primarily nonprofit community groups? Are they commercial use, commercial purposes? Can you kind of give us a little?
I can and I can't. I would, I would love to. Unfortunately, we get so few of these that there really doesn't seem to be a pattern. There are nonprofit, there are for-profit. There's races, there's family events, there's neighborhood events. So we don't get a lot of these to say that we usually have it, which is why this is such a broad statute and all-encompassing, is because I, Lloyd and, Lloyd and Gary can correct me if they, if they have a standard, but we really don't get a standard. It seems to be all over the map.
Okay. Could I just say one more thing? I would do really appreciate then, especially this 30 calendar day requirement, because that gives anybody who is applying for a multi-day event really has time to work with staff. And there's, none of these things will feel really rushed or maybe even overly onerous because there's time for dialogue and discussion and for a clear understanding of what needs to happen. So I.
That's a, that's a good point, yeah. Thank you. We do need to wrap it up. So on this item B, I just want to hear from other councilmembers to know if the council wants to move ahead with this item B. It sounds like Councilwoman Bradshaw and Councilwoman Price-Hewish are in favor of this item B. What about the rest of you?
I'm good with it. I mean, it's to, to Brad's point, it, it's not a lot. It's as broad as we can. We can always come back if all of a sudden we have an uptick in events and we need to address this differently. That is the, we can review this, but I don't think we need to be too restrictive for just a small handful of stuff that is coming up now.
Okay. So you're good with B as drafted?
Yep.
Okay. You're okay with that?
Yeah. Yeah, I think for the sake of let's do this, I think it seems like we'll have a wide variety of what people do. But I, yes, I'm okay with that.
Okay. Any other?
Nothing. Everything else, everything else is the same. So I believe I have the direction I need to come back and be on the regular agenda with a, with a ordinance ready for the council in two weeks. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. Okay, we will take, take a very brief break now and come back for our regular city council meeting in just a minute. Okay, we'd like to welcome everyone to our Bountiful City Council meeting, Tuesday, September 23rd, 2025. And we are grateful to Abby Miller for leading us in the pledge of allegiance. She's going to lead us in the pledge in sign language. So that's really a neat talent that she has. So come on up, and we'd love to have you do that now. Thank you.
Please stand with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And we're grateful to Keenan Price for being here to lead us in the invocation for our opening prayer tonight for city council.
Our Father in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Father, we are grateful to live in this land of promise. Father, we pray that it may be protected. Father, we, we pray that those who protect us will be kept safe as well. Father, we pray for those who lead our nation, our state, and this city, that thy Spirit may rest upon them. We pray that we will continue to follow the example of thy son, Jesus Christ, to follow his teachings and to be like him. We are grateful for the abundance that we enjoy in this city and pray that we will always be grateful for it. Father, we love thee. We love thy son and grateful to, to worship thee. And we offer this prayer in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you so much. For those of you who don't know, Keenan Price has been a longtime resident and longtime employee, actually, of Bountiful City and has been instrumental with some things like helping with the statue at the baby cemetery and really cares about our community. So thanks for being here tonight and offering our opening prayer for us. Now, the time is yours if you are here to make a public comment. If you'd like to speak, please state your name and where you live, and you'll have two minutes. And I just want to shout out to the kids here from CE.gov at Bountiful High. I think there's a number of you here for your homeworks assignments, so we're glad you're here tonight. And if there's something you'd like to say, we'd love to hear from you, but we'd love to hear from anyone. State your name, and you'll have two minutes.
Two minutes. Gary Davis, 2814 South 500 West, Bountiful. Okay. I want to apologize to Mr. Martin and the IT department for comments I made at an earlier city council meeting. Mr. Martin's still head of the IT department, correct? Okay. Head of the IT department at that time appeared before you folks requesting funds for the purchase of computers to replace the ones in City Hall. During the public comments portion, I made a flippant comment about using the computers for street hockey and how my computer is running fine after 12-plus years in controlling my online activities. Thought it was only about nine years. After I made these comments, I decided to conduct some research into the replacement of city-owned operated computing systems. I was surprised to find multiple sources state that the industry standard suggestion for replacing daily heavy-use computing systems is every three to five years. I was unaware of this standard. As such, I now choose to offer my apologies to Mr. Martin, the IT department, and the city council for the inappropriate, uneducated comments that I had made earlier. I was wrong, and I do apologize for those comments and only those comments at that time that I made. Thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
Linda Ransdale, 1133 South 300 West, Bountiful. Problems and possible solutions, dog park. The bark that's in there is quite large and in, it includes a lot of hazardous material for the dogs. A lot of people have had their dogs' paws cut, et cetera. These are some of the plastics that have been in the bark that's in there now, okay? Solution, I understand there's a finer grade of the bark that we can get also from the city dump at no cost that is a lot finer and would have less problems with added materials other than wood. We'd like to see that done. Sanitation, the dog park. There's been algae in the little water trough, the, the city water section for the dogs there. Also, people, I don't know if the city or the other people brought in buckets of water that have contained some algae and bad water for the dogs. There's also no, it's not accessible for those that are handicapped. I've heard of three people, from three people myself, that are wheelchair-bound, would love to take their dog there but cannot get their wheelchair inside the park, the dog section park. West Jordan has an excellent dog park. They have an outer section that is sidewalk and one's cross-section where people with, that are in wheelchairs can access the park and be able to have their dog there and make friends there, if you will. We'd like to see what the city would do, especially with that bark problem. Also, there's, we never see anybody cleaning that park at all. A lot of dog parks take three hours during, say, the Wednesday where they close it down and go in and clean it up. I know a lot of the people that.
If you want to just wrap it up, your time, your time is expired.
Sorry, I didn't see that. Thank you. So we'd like to present these problems and hopefully see if you folks can get something done about it. I understand somebody named Brock is in charge of the dog park, and nothing's been done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Troy Nielsen, 677 East Center Street, Bountiful, Utah. Here because a, a couple of things. One, I'm concerned about the popularity of the e-bike trend that is happening, and also the lack of ability for crossing busy streets with inside of the city. I know Centerville is now dealing with a 13-year-old tragedy of one, and Farmington just lost a 13-year-old to an e-bike situation. So I guess this is just preventative caution of what can we do in our city to prevent, be able to prevent something like this to happen to the individual and the motorist. One of the major concerns that I have, that I've identified that could be a possible area or a, a concern is on the street 400 North and Main Street. The configuration of that particular intersection, I feel, is completely outdated. I feel like it was designed and built for, when it was designed and built back in the 50s. And I feel like the population, based off of the general plan, is your plan to grow the population with inside of the city vertically. And so if, as you add more residents to it, I don't feel like it's a sufficient architectural design to be able to control the type of traffic, just because the way that the sunlight travels when you're headed on that left turn up and you see traffic motorists going at 40 miles an hour either up or around the corner, it gives an optical illusion of whether or not they're actually coming towards you or they're going to stay straight up 400 North. So that's just something that I thought we should bring to our attention early now before it becomes a tragedy and we turn into a KSL article. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak for a public comment period? Thanks to everyone for your comments. We'll now consider approval of the minutes of the previous meetings held August 26th and September 9th, 2025.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes, and now we'll move to council reports. We'll start with you, Councilwoman Child.
So we had another successful event at Bountiful City Park, the Freedoms Light Festival happened. I went over there the other day, and there were lots of schoolkids running around. It was a, it was a good event, well-attended. I'd also like to report on the food drive that the food pantry held, the city held during the 9/11 Day of Service. And they, they tripled the amount of food that, that they received last year with over 65,000 pounds of food donated on that day.
Excellent. Thank you. Councilwoman Bradshaw?
Thanks, Mayor. Both of the boards I serve on behalf of the city are meeting later in the month or have already had their meeting for this month. But I did want to note that the Legislative Redistricting Committee met earlier this week and will be meeting again tomorrow at 11:00. Due to court action involving Better Boundaries, the legislature is having to reconsider congressional maps. This is specific to congressional maps. And they've submitted several maps for consideration and are taking public comment on those maps. One of the key provisions of the Better Boundaries Initiative One of the key provisions of the Better Boundaries Initiative is that cities, to the greatest extent possible, kind of remain whole, and that the legislature be considerate of those communities of interest. And so, would encourage each of us to take a look at those maps, encourage the public to take a look at those maps. Personally, I've kind of mourned the loss of being with the rest of Davis County, where we are in the 2nd district, and the northern part of Davis County has been in the 1st district, and that we've been separated from that community of interest and are paired with many wonderful but rural communities in parts of the state, in Jewell County, in Millard County, and Beaver, and that aren't necessarily our immediate communities of interest. So, some of the maps the legislature has prepared keep Davis County whole, and some do not, some do some interesting dividing of the city of North Salt Lake, and some divide up near Leighton and Clearfield. So, it's something for us to take a look at individually and think about where those lines ought to be drawn and how they help us and help our members of Congress interact with us and the projects they choose to take on. So, le.utah.gov is where you can find those maps and find the hearing tomorrow at 11:00.
Thank you. Great information. Councilman Higginson.
I want to thank Councilmember Bradshaw for keeping us apprised of the developments there at the legislature and for sharing those maps. I would have not come upon those myself without your help, so. I'm personally very much in favor of gerrymandering, and, but I'm happy to have the county remain together. I figure if everybody's doing it, why not us? So, we had another fantastic Planning Commission meeting last Tuesday. Most of you were there, so you don't need to hear this report, but the public should know that there was more robust discussion on the revision of the general plan as they worked through their recommendations for change to that draft. We also had very robust public comment again. As the public comment was continued, I want to let the public know that on the 30th of this month, we'll be holding a special Planning Commission meeting, during which time you will also be able to speak publicly about your thoughts on the plan. And I'd recommend that any folks that are here tonight, if you yourself personally, or if you know someone, who has opinions and insights that ought to be shared with the Planning Commission and subsequently the city council, come and share them with us. We'd love to hear from you. And that Planning Commission meeting will not be at 6:30 as they usually are, it'll be at 7:00 o'clock again on Tuesday, the 30th. I believe I have that date right. Is that right?
That's right. One week from tonight. Yeah, thank you.
That's my report. It's, it's wonderful to see the Planning Commission taking this, this obligation so seriously. We've got some very talented folks there. I think they're going to improve the product and get us back a recommendation, so, thank you.
That's a really good update. And just so you guys know, you CE.gov kids, students, so Councilman Higginson is talking about the general plan, and so the general plan is Bountiful's plan for what, how we will evolve over the next 20 years, how, how our city will develop, where does it make sense for us to have apartments, where does it make sense for us not to have apartments, and much more. We're talking about the water development in our city, we're talking about, you know, active transportation, yeah, bike cycling, we're talking about where we have economic development, where we have stores, corridors, retail. So, just how, how we grow as a city and how we evolve. So, thanks for that update, Councilman Higginson.
Thank you.
Councilman Murray.
One quick update, because I'm not sure if we're going to be able to get it, counsel me before that, but fall cleanup is coming up, October 6th to the 10th, and then another big one is the hazardous waste day on October 11th. So, I was really glad to see that because I have lots of cans of paint that I have been holding on to for a project that I wanted to do, but now the paint's too old to do it. So, need to get rid of that. Then the other thing, too, just, I sit on the mosquito abatement board, and I always joke that, you know, I'm passionate about people that study mosquitoes and kill them, but this is a really unique year because in Davis County, we had two West Nile virus, West Nile virus deaths. And it was the first time, I think, in a long time that all the testing pools in Davis County, I think 90% of them found a positive West Nile virus in it. So, I'm grateful that our, we have the taxpayer dollars that go out and spray, and we also have the ability as residents to get on the mosquito abatement website when you have an event and schedule a spray in your neighborhood or, yeah, in your neighborhood to reduce that, so.
How much does that cost, Councilman Murray?
Free 90 free.
Free 90 free?
Yeah, thank you.
It's free, but not really, because we all pay taxes.
We all pay for it through our property tax.
But there's no extra charge to ask them to come.
But to ask them and do the spray, I used it a few times this year for some events that we had in my yard, and my wife was very grateful for that, and it's, it's amazing how many residents take advantage of that throughout the county to keep the mosquitoes down. And it's a cool facility, they've got a lot of drones that they can now use to go out into the, out into the Great Salt Lake area, the marshlands, and, and, and treat the ponds out there, so. They do a lot to try to keep the mosquitoes down.
Thank you. Councilwoman Price-Hewish.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll report first on the Bountiful City Youth Council. I want to recognize that Johnny Alley, who is our Bountiful City Youth Council's city manager, is here tonight, and he does an amazing job providing leadership there. We had a really fun activity this past week. The kids were able to go, and I was able to accompany them. We went to the Bountiful City landfill, and I want to thank our streets director, Charles Benson, for being there and guiding us through that and taking us and showing us so many vital aspects of this important part of infrastructure that we have in Bountiful, and I think the kids were super impressed with the equipment and the amount of trash and how it's handled there. And Charles, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think he said that every day, each truck, each garbage truck collects the waste from 650 homes per truck, is that right?
They pick up between 650 and 800 cans a day.
That's amazing. I mean, that's per truck, and how many trucks are on the road every day?
I have five garbage trucks on the road and two recycling trucks.
So, that's a whole lot of refuse, and it has to go somewhere, and our team over at the Bountiful City landfill are doing an amazing job of handling that all properly and covering it and doing all of the things that keep us in compliance and because, so we don't have to worry about that. We put it on the curb, and we don't worry. And thank you, Charles, and your team there. That was a really cool opportunity. The Bountiful City Youth Council will be helping this week with the mill stream cleanup, working with the Sons of the Utah Pioneers, so they're always engaged in something good, and I appreciate what they're doing for the city. Another thing I wanted to just mention quickly is we had our power commission meeting earlier today, and of course, our power director, Alan Johnson, is here along with Dan Bell, who's on the power commission, and it's an exceptional group of people there. I was reminded today, I really appreciated Mr. Price's prayer tonight. He mentioned the abundance that we enjoy here in Bountiful City, and I think one of the things that I feel most distinctly is the abundance of good people and neighborly people and the abundance of community care that happens within our community. And earlier, the power commission, we also began with a prayer, and I was reminded during that today that the work that is done by our linemen throughout the city 24/7, 365 days a year, is essential and dangerous, and, and gratitude was expressed for those incredible linemen who do such a great job for our city. So, I wanted to just recognize the linemen and what they're doing for our city. And for the, I, sorry, I am just taking a little minute, but I really appreciated our, in our work session, speaking about fiber and that infrastructure that has been laid here. And again, in the power commission meeting earlier today, we, we had a visual, Luke Vigel, who, he is on the Power Department team, he brought this giant cable that is being laid through, correct me if I'm wrong, Alan, but it's being laid from the northwest power station, is the third line coming out of the northwest power station, and this conduit where this power line, it's like this thick, and it's really heavy, and, but the conduit where this power line is being laid was placed 40, 45 years ago in anticipation for the need of the growth and the infrastructure needs of our power needs in our city, and that was through the foresight and planning, just like our fiber, the foresight and planning of what is happening today with our general plan, and it's all, it, there's just so much synergy, and it sometimes takes decades for it to come to fruition. And so, that was really cool to hear about, that the Power Department's been planning for this third line for decades, and here it's happening now. So, thank you to the work happening there. And Mayor, that is all for me.
Thank you. Thanks so much, Council. Just as a reminder to the public, you came, and we heard some great comments from the public, and I just want to remind you that the fact that we don't immediately address them, we're actually legally not able to discuss them because we have to notice any discussion items, but we do hear what you're saying when you come and speak to us in public comment. We're taking notes, we're talking to staff about it, and we will follow up, but it's just not, it's a time for, it's your time for the public to be able to say whatever you want to say to us, and then we will address it later. So, just wanted to let you know that. And then also, by way of report, I will just say that this last week, we had a, a business symposium. So, here at City Hall, every single Bountiful business was invited to come, and we had a morning where we networked and we, we, we talked about the businesses in Bountiful and business licensing and things that are developments in Bountiful, and it was a great morning, and we received some instruction about safety online and security, online security. So, it was a great event, the Bountiful Business Symposium, and we're really grateful for any businesses that do business here in Bountiful. Okay, now we'll move to consider approval of expenditures greater than $1,000 paid on the 3rd and 10th.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and now to your item, Lieutenant David Gill, to consider approval of the purchase of exterior lighting upgrades. Thanks for being here tonight.
Madam Mayor and councilmembers, it's good to be with you. Thank you. I'm here to seek your approval to make a purchase for a lighting upgrade. The Bountiful Police Department facility is approaching 30 years of service. Over time, the exterior lighting system has become increasingly unreliable, outdated, and inadequate for our current operational needs. This project proposes a complete upgrade of the exterior lighting system. There is sufficient funding in the fiscal year '26 budget for this project. Many fixtures around the public safety building are failing, resulting in poor visibility during nighttime hours. In particular, numerous Ballard lights are in disrepair. Several have fallen over or contain broken glass, pose a safety risk, or are no longer functioning. Due to their age and design, these fixtures are not readily repairable and require a full replacement. A lighting architect was hired to conduct a comprehensive analysis and design a new lighting system. Working collaboratively with our engineering department, detailed plans were developed and submitted to three reputable contractors. We received three competitive bids for the exterior lighting project, each based on the specifications provided in the submitted plans. They are as follows. First was Vista Construction for $123,028.81. Second is Silverleaf Partners, $189,613. And third was City Creek Construction, $232,909. Although there is a significant difference in pricing among the three proposals, we confirmed with both the Bountiful City Engineering Department and the project architect that all three bids are comparable in scope, materials, and installation offerings. Each vendor's proposal met the project specification, and Vista Construction's reduced cost is partially attributed to their involvement in another project nearby, which allows them to minimize mobilization expenses, reduce costs of transporting personnel and equipment to the site. The Bountiful Police Department, the engineering department, our contracted architect, and the city manager have reviewed this staff report. There's no other significant impacts or issues to mention, so we respectfully request your approval to purchase the lighting upgrade through Vista Construction, the low bid in the amount of $123,028.81. And I am happy to entertain or take any questions you may have.
Thanks. Any questions, Council?
Mayor, just a, a note. I really appreciated the police department, including in its report, the explanation of why Vista was so much lower. It's, it's always interesting when you have such a difference between bidders, and so the fact that you called that out saved me from needing to ask it, so thank you.
Thank you.
If no one else has anything, I'm happy to make a motion to approve the Vista Construction bid of $123,028.81.
I'll second that bid. Excuse me, that motion.
All in favor?
Aye. It's just not my night tonight.
Okay, that was unanimous, right? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes. Thanks so much for being here to present.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, Mr. Alan Johnson, the next two items are yours.
Yes, Mayor, and Council, it's great to be here tonight, and as was reported this morning, these items have all been taken through the power commission and will come with a unanimous recommendation from the Power Department. But the first item we have is the 1100 ampere cable. This is a high-voltage cable that will be the third feeder that will come out of the northwest substation. As it says, it's been in design for a lot of years, and as we come back in, as we build the sub, we'll want to put that in, energize that as the substation is built in the spring. So, this is bringing the cable in. We'll be installing it early next spring. Partially why we're bringing this in, because you'll notice it's in stock, it's not going to be a long lead like a lot of things, but we're using the other cable that we had in stock on the feeder that we're doing down by Performance Ford and working our way out, so we've used all of our inventory. So, this will partially give us inventory should something happen till in the spring, and then we'll, we'll put that back in. So, this is a budgeted item. We did go out, this is a cable that has a 40-year guaranteed life, has a guarantee on it, they anticipate it being like 80 years, so it is good cable, both of them. So, we'd, staff and power commission recommend that we take the low bid from Irby for the 8,470 feet of wire for $110,058. Again, this will be put into inventory and then pulled out as we need it.
Thank you. Any questions, Council?
Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion that we accept the low bid for the stated cable from Irby at $110,058.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. And the next item?
The next item is a bed, and this would be a service truck that we'd be using on a day-to-day basis for our line crews, and this, this is only the bed, it is not the truck. Like I say, we'll still have to be coming back with a truck. We'd anticipate putting on a Ford chassis, but they do not have the pricing on that, but we'd like to get the bed coming. One of these beds that we use is similar to what we've been using, and you see some pictures on the back. These beds are not your standard bed that you walk and pick up. It's been designed that'll put our high voltage, high voltage tools can go in, and our climbing gear, materials can fit in it, and it fits- gear and materials can fit in it and it fits on a Ford, like a Ford 550 chassis. So, they're a good-sized bed and they're custom-built. So, as we come back in to use these, there's not a lot of manufacturers. So, we did have two people that was doing it, one company's been bought out, so we was only able to get one bid. So, we really only got one bid on this body that, like I say, we've worked on the design. So, that's why you'll notice that we've only got one price and we normally would have had two on there. This company has been typically the low bid anyway, but it's, like I say, it's the only one in the area that we're able to get. It would be our recommendation that because of this design that we work out and one of the things we talked about this morning, that we do different in Bountiful than a lot of other companies because all of our poles are in the backyards. A lot of the other companies will show up with a small truck and a bucket truck and a line truck, so they'll show up with three trucks. Well, it doesn't make a lot of sense to show up with a bucket truck and go work in somebody's backyard, but that's how they carry a lot of their tools. So, we've used a special, bigger bed to fit our materials on here so that we can send our crews up to get into it and we don't have to drive our $400,000 bucket trucks all over just to carry tools in the bins. So, we get them out when we need them, but they don't have to go out all the time. So, anyway, it'd be our, the staff and Power Commission's recommendation that we approve for Mountain States, the bed for the truck for $57,484. And again, this is within the budget, but we've still got to buy the truck with the pricing, we may be just a little bit over what we'd identified in the budget, but we believe we'll be fine with the budget overall, so.
Thank you so much. For the students here, just kind of a heads up, that, that Mr. Johnson here, he's representing the Power Department and he's asking the City Council to approve a purchase of this specialized truck bed. And so, I'm sure that you can appreciate that, you know, you can't, we can't, you can't just go to the, to Ford or Chevy and pick out a truck. He needs really specialized equipment for his power crews and for the linemen to be able to go up onto the power poles and then also our Streets Department Director, Mr. Benson here, like he has really special equipment. So, we, unfortunately, we can't just go and buy a truck, we have to have it outfitted and the Police Department as well, where they need a lot of specialized equipment and so it adds a lot of expense and we have special equipment that we have to buy along with these vehicles that we purchase. So, this is an example of, of that tonight. So, thanks for presenting that. Council, do you have any questions on that?
Mayor, I want to say that I appreciated the pictures. Thanks for those, Alan.
Oh, you're welcome.
And I'd be happy to make a motion if none of the council has questions.
Right.
Happy to make a motion that we sign the contract with Mountain States Industrial Services for the purchase of the service body for $57,484.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, seconded by Councilwoman Bradshaw. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.